Incredible story. The flight manager, Gantz, I think his name is Gantz, he drew this picture. And he said, you know, we gotta have, we gotta make sure that we do this, we get up here and then swing around down this way. And then we know what happens after everybody can see it. This is the moon. This is the best drawing I can give you. I'm not an artist, okay? But if you see that, there were some complications. You've seen the movie before, okay? There's some complications, okay? Something happened and at the same time, this is going to be the flight engineer had to every minute make sure the adjusting of the flight patterns. If not, if it was off and they were paying too much attention to one thing, you would fly up into space, okay? And at the same time that was going on, one of the air filters broke. We know the story, okay? They fixed it up and things like that. And what do you think the goal was of this particular mission? Can anybody tell me? What was the goal of this particular mission first time? Anybody? That's absolutely right. To land, the thing is to land back home safely. That is absolute correct. No, it was to get to the moon. No, they took out the moon and crashed it with a fighter. No, they were thinking when everything was going on here, we always, if you watch the movie, he would always come back to this diagram. This is our vision. We gotta get these men back home safely, land safely. No matter what happens from here to all over, all, it doesn't matter. We gotta get them. That's the goal. How we're gonna do that is that's the goal. This is what you do and everything mirrors off the vision. Everything. No matter what you are, a family, an entity, a corporation, marketplace, a city, a community, you have to have a compelling vision. If you don't, we're just wonders in space per se. Does that make sense? So it's up to this committee. If you want to work on a vision today and start it and then we can get other media later on do that. But it's up to you all if you would like to do that. That is your call. Or you might wanna say, no, let's go ahead and go with this one. I will follow your lead.
Oh, for me, we're talking about a high quality of life here in Del Rio and we have some issues. You know, we have our water and our sewer issues that we're having. We can't have a quality of life. We don't have the main things that we need to sustain ourselves. Our streets are in bad shape. They've always been. You know, we need to strive to try to get better streets here in Del Rio. And some of the things that the citizens of Del Rio have let us be known about, you know? But as far as the quality of life, this water and sewer situation that we're under right now, we can't pretty much develop to the north. And that, that affects Del Rio, the employment of Del Rio and whatnot. So as a vision for myself, you know, those are three. Four would be our drainage also, you know? We have issues with drainage, you know? So for our quality of life, these issues have to be addressed.
Okay. For quality of life, you are correct. But we're talking about vision. Those things are objectives that could be under the vision, but to make sure that those things are important, which they are, don't get me wrong, they're very important. But if one prioritize, we mentioned the word prioritize, definition, it is important right now, or where does it fall in priority to the vision that we have? Quality of life, generally, we all want quality, great quality of life. We know that, okay? So the thing is, it's gonna fall in within the vision, but where does it fall in within the vision? So the first thing we need to make sure that we have a compelling vision. My question was, is this a compelling vision? Why did it go up? Don't give it up.
I don't think it's compelling.
Good. Don't think it's compelling?
No.
Thoughts?
I think it's a little too flawed.
Okay.
It's a statement that tells...
Absolutely.
Well, I don't have any problems with that vision statement because if you think about the, they call it 13th scenario. The vision statement from JFK was put a man on the moon by the end of the day. There were no details. It was not something that anyone had any idea how to do.
True.
And it made it happen because the vision was put out there. Because this is not talking about today. I'm not gonna disagree about it. The infrastructure, that's huge. But this is a big picture esoteric concept for most vision statements, the ones that you say. The ones that you say, right? Disney, Coco, there were no details. So, you know, maybe tweak it a little bit, but overall as a vision statement, I don't necessarily have a problem with it. Because it is that big picture, long-term view.
True. Where is it pointing? Where is it pointiness? That's my question. Compelling and where is it pointiness? That's what a vision statement would be. Where would it be pointiness?
What direction?
Yeah, and what direction it's going in. If it's compelling, that's great. Where is it pointing us? The vision should be very clear. They say, oh, this is the direction this company, this community is going. Where is it taking us? Does that make sense? I have to ask these questions because these things are to clarify. Where is this vision statement pointing Del Rio, Texas? Are we going anywhere with this statement? You may be right. Maybe just tweak it and add or just rephrase, but any question, I mean, anybody can answer that. Where is it pointing us?
I don't know if the goal for this meeting was to read through our, our vision statement or something.
Incredible story. Uh, the flight manager, uh, Gans, I think his name is Gans, he drew this picture. And he said, you know, we gotta have, we gotta make sure that we do this, we get up here and then swing around down this way. And then we know what happens after, everybody can see it, this is the moon, this is the best drawing I can give you, I'm not an artist, okay? But if you see that, there were some complications, you've seen the movie before, okay? There's some complications, okay? Uh, something happened and at the same time, this is going, the flight engineer had to every minute make sure the adjusting of the flight patterns. If not, if it was off and they were paying too much attention to one thing, you would fly up into space, okay? And at the same time that was going on, one of the, um, air filters broke, we know the story, okay? They fixed it up and things like that. And what do you think the goal was of this particular mission? Can anybody tell me? What was the goal of this particular mission first time? Anybody? That's absolutely right. To land, the thing is to land back home safely, that is absolute correct. No, it was to get to the moon, no, they come out in the moon and crash, we're gonna fail there. No, they were, they think, when everything was going on here, we always, if you watch the movie, he would always come back to this diagram, this is our vision. We gotta get these men back home safely, land safely. No matter what happens from here to all over, all, it doesn't matter, we gotta get them, that's the goal. How we're gonna do that is that's the goal, this is what you do and everything mirrors off the vision. Everything, no matter what, you are a family, an entity, a corporation, marketplace, a city, a community, you have to have a compelling vision. If you don't, we're just wonders in space, per se, does that make sense? So, it's up to this committee, if you want to work on, on a vision today and start it and then we can get another meeting later on and do that. But it's up to you all if you would like to do that. That is your call. Or you might wanna say, no, let's go ahead and go with this one, I will follow your lead.
For you all. Well, for me, uh, you know, we're talking about a high quality of life here in Del Rio. And we have some issues, you know, we have our water and our sewer issues that we're having. We can't have a, a, a quality of life, we don't have the, uh, the main things that we need to sustain ourselves. Uh, our, uh, our streets are in bad shape, they've always been, you know, we need to strive to try to get the, uh, better streets here in Del Rio. And some of the things that the, uh, citizens of Del Rio have, uh, let us be known about it, you know? But, uh, as far as the quality of life, this, uh, uh, water and, and sewer situation that we're, we're, uh, under right now. We can't pretty much develop to the north and that, that affects Del Rio, the employment of Del Rio and whatnot. So, uh, as a vision for myself, you know, those are, uh, three, four would be our, our drainage also, you know? We have issues with drainage, you know, so, uh, as for our quality of life, these issues have to be addressed.
Okay, for quality of life, you are correct, but we're talking about vision. Those things are objectives that could be under the vision, but to make sure that those things are important, which they are, don't get me wrong, they're very important. But in one prioritize, we mentioned the word prioritize, definition, it is important right now, right now, or where does it fall in priority to the vision that we have? Quality of life, generally, we all want quality, great quality of life, we know that, okay? So, the thing is, it's gonna fall in within the vision, but where does it fall in within the vision? So, the first thing, we need to make sure that we have a compelling vision. My question was, is this a compelling vision, why did it go up? Don't give it up. Good, don't think it's compelling? Thoughts?
Uh, I think it's a little too broad, I think it's a, uh, statement that helps.
Absolutely.
I don't have any problems with that vision statement, because if you think about the, they call it thirteen scenario. The vision statement from JFK was put a man on the moon by the end of the day, there were no details. It, it was not something that anyone had any idea how to do.
True.
And it made it happen because the vision was put out there, because this, this is not talking about today. I'm not gonna disagree about it, the infrastructure, that's huge. But thi- this is a big picture esoteric concept for most vision statements, the ones that you should pay, right? Disney, Coco, there were no details, so, you know, maybe tweak it a little bit. But, but overall, as a vision statement, I don't necessarily have a problem with it, because it is that big picture, long-term view.
True, where is it pointing? Where is it pointing us? That's my question, compelling and where is it pointing us? That's what a vision statement would be. Where, where would it be pointing us? This one? Yeah, and what direction it's going, it may get, for you compelling, that's great, where is it pointing us? The vision should be very clear, they say, oh, this is the direction this company, this company or this community is going, where is it taking us? Does that make sense? I have to ask these questions because these things are, to clarify, where is this vision statement pointing Del Rio Texas? Are we going anywhere with this statement? We may, you may be right, maybe just to tweak it and add or just rephrase, but if, any question, I mean, any, and, and, anybody can answer that, where is it pointing us?
What is, uh, obviously, obviously. I, I don't know if the goal for this meeting was to redo our, or redo that statement, or if that's something that, I feel it takes more time. And I know you asked if you wanted us to do that today or not, I don't think that, they were to debate for that, uh, despite it, but I didn't. And I also don't think the addition changed every time, like, I don't think that if this was done by somebody, I don't think every administration or city manager or mayor is up there to change it. Otherwise, we're gonna be starting every four years, every time, somebody gets, you know, replaced or...
I think that we, as the city of Del Rio, want to become the, um, standout, uh, border city in Texas. As the place to be, live and work. And, and we, how do we achieve those, uh, things? I think we need to be nationally known as the quintessential border city that you want to live and work. And, and, and how that transpires into actions for the city organization. You know, it may be, uh, obviously maintaining the cultural integrity of our community while achieving, um, you know, state-of-the-art, uh, technology for, um, primary businesses to land, uh, for, uh, you know, maintaining infrastructure, um, sustainable infrastructure. Key words, sustainable, that it doesn't, we don't let go of that sustainability, we, we don't forget it. It can't fall to the wayside, it always has to be pressing in the forefront of our thoughts.
Well, I was gonna say that I agree from there that it's too broad, um, and it doesn't give you a focus, what are we gonna pick, uh, which way we're gonna go?
Yes, the mission statement.
Yes.
So, uh, reading this, and this is what everyone's saying, is I think this is just a simple vision statement of who we are. Where we are and what we should be producing, and that ultimately is called the mind. Thank you, sir.
A flying art.
Raise your hand high there, Kinsley.
Cassandra.
Hi, yes, so, for me, what I extrapolated from that statement is, is that the mission of the city is to develop a prosperous and sustainable community that meets the needs of all of its citizens through maintaining and prioritizing safety, economic development, public infrastructure, and community unity to maintain and sustain a high quality of life for all of our citizens.
True, that's the mission, correct?
That's what I get from that, yes.
Yeah, and the mission is correct, I'm talking about the vision.
That's what I'm saying, that's why it's extrapolated from...
The vision and the mission are different. Yeah, I, I agree with that. Any thoughts on that?
Oh, Zach, sorry?
So, I, I mean, that's a rewording of it, sure, um, but, but again, my experience with vision statements is they are not specific. They, they are broad, right? So, I, I don't want to go down, and like Randy said, you know, if, if we, uh, make it too specific, well, now it's gonna wanna be changed, right? You wanna keep it broad, so then, yes, when you get to the day-to-day execution, there might be changes, add, as you, you know, take care of this, you, you then reallocate resources, but big pictures, you know?
It has to be broad, yes, I understand, okay, any other comments from the table? Question next to me, would you like to continue with this, or would you like to hold off for it and then get another meeting, up to you all?
Let me ask the administration, how long is this mission statement in there?
I mean, this, this came, came about af- after I got on council.
It was, it was with the conference of plan, the envisioned Del Rio conference of plan in one of the two.
About, right, so about five seasons?
Well.
Three, three, three.
I thought it was like nineteen something.
Relatively new.
I, I mean, what's your expertise telling us, uh, Pastor Osekka, in regards to this?
It, it, I mean, I think we're like, uh, Randy said, kinda keep it, because anytime we change administration or change council, we don't wanna change the statement or the vision statement to our citizens and to everybody.
I totally agree.
And to our employees, 'cause they're the ones that's supposed to be memorizing along with us, this mission statement, it's, it's, it's everybody in board.
Is there anyone interested in anything versus once it's said, it's gone unless you make, uh, adjustments?
We gotta ask our attorney, she sits right there.
If it's compelling enough for the next, um, the next table, the next, the mayor, the next council, if it's compelling enough and it's going in the right direction, I don't see why I'd disagree with the judgment, in good faith, we're moving in the same direction.
It has to set up as good of this program, the city, the community of Del Rio, who came up with it and council perhaps, whatever, to, uh, re-fund right now.
Excellent.
Now, now, is this mission statement supposed to be branded in all our, you know, somewhere, uh, 'cause how long you been with council?
A little over a year.
Have you seen the mission state? And, and if we don't know it, imagine with our community. I, I guess the question would be also, how many employees know the mission statement?
Yeah, you know.
Thank you, Roxy.
Don't, don't everybody raise their hand if you think about...
Yeah, and I, and, and this is something that I think, you know, Pastor, it's, 'cause in, in our world, and I go into my shop, uh, we have a mission statement that says, our mission statement is inspiring love by this, 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 that, and all that crosses A, B, C, to Z goes. But every session, every meeting, every employee, new employee gets the mission statement first. We did it at the hospital, we were there, right, Marty? It was short and sweet, everybody understood it, if somebody will ask you, uh, as an employee or as a council or a mayor, what is your mission statement? I don't know, I haven't seen it, you know, 'cause it's so, I mean, to me, it's, it's gotta be catchy, it's gotta be right in front, we all can memorize it and state it out to whoever asks us, you know, Marty?
So, my concern with it is that this is more of a community vision statement, not the city of Del Rio organization statement, vision statement. So, when it comes to us as employees, what is our direction? What is our, to get?
Well, these are things we need to look at now, uh, it's a T R, because everything that, the decisions that are being made, especially for the future, they have to be mirrored off the vision, to see if we're heading in the right direction, if we're, are we gonna hit the moon, are we gonna not hit this one, are we gonna come back? Or what is, that's where everybody said, everybody would come and make this decision, this is an easy way to say, you know what, it's a noble thing, but it's not within our vision. We don't do this, we do this, this is where we're headed. So, it's up to the committee, if you wanna continue this today or, uh, maybe table it off to another, but remember that everything has to mirror off the vision, especially for the community, for any organization, really.
I think with the shortage of time that we have, I think we're gonna go ahead and keep it, 'cause it's two hours or three hours, I think we're gonna go and come back to it, 'cause, uh, our understanding, we're gonna have a workshop in regards to what we're, our standard or expectations to our administration. But we'll go ahead, Pastor, go ahead and continue.
So, um, table it?
Yes.
Table it, everyone agree on table it? Just doing, very well, then we will table it and move on to the next thing. Uh, the next thing is if you, in your package, you should have a governing pillar and vote for the city of Del Rio. There are some, um, the first six ones that are there is suggestions, the things that are coming up to the table. This is where you're going to have a vote and see which ones you would like to work on first and then get the ideas, the objectives, and the step, action steps for that. Is there anything, uh, that you might like to, to look at and really attack, if you, if you notice it? There are no, I did, one, two, three, four, five, and six over here, one, two, three, four, five, and six, and right there. Yeah, it'll be in these order, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, nine, ten, or, got it, okay? Now, whichever one you want to, you think is viable and important, this is where you get your little notepad, okay? You just write down a number, that's all you gotta do, write down a number and we'll know which one it is, okay?
What's the question?
The question is, which one of these do you think is priority, and I remember when we say that, remember, I want you to, we want you to take a look at all those six, or maybe there's one there that is not there, that you think that is very important and, and, and priority. Now, we, I want you to take a look at all these right here and think, what is the catalyst here? Is there one that's going to affect the rest of them to bring all of them up? Is there one, maybe there is, maybe there isn't, but let's take a look at that objectively and say, is there one of these things that we can conquer? And then it will move everything else up, everything else up. See here? Another thing, sir?
Notepad, ah, sorry, not notebook.
So, this should be in priority, correct?
Yes, perfect.
Is it supposed to be just one or?
No, just for one, for one, the first one for you would be number, got it? One, two, three, four, five, six, okay? The first one for you would be number two, right?
Staff, you all can participate too, just go like, number...
Do you all have a listing of the, of the governing pillars?
Yes.
Down in the numbers, it'll be one, twenty, four, five, six, just put a number, the one that you want, look on there, and we'll take it. Do a quick test. Perfect, I'll see you. Get the vision, sir? Okay, do the vision, yeah, sure, thank you. Double second for this, double second for the question. Thank you, sir. Have I got your thing? Thank you. Anybody turn it on? Super, all right, well, we can see that, uh, right now, number two, which is the fiscal and/or financial sustainability, okay? So, there is a process, you should have got the wallpaper of the process of what we're gonna be doing this, um, it starts with the, uh, from the idea to the reality, the...
This one.
The process that you're gonna go through to go through these, so it'll be number two we'll go into first unless there's something else that you wanna go through. Here, we're gonna go through this one right here, from here, okay? So, any, um, this is when we start running things down right over there, okay? Any ideas on the fiscal and/or financial sustainability, any ideas to make this work?
Any ideas of what?
Any ideas to get these things flowing in place, that we need to get it to be, so number two would be the first one. What do we need to change, what do we need to do, and what, these right here, these questions that are here, or the process? It, um, it actually, um, gives us the what, the why, and the how. We ask the what, the why, and the how we're gonna do it, okay? So, what needs to be changed, what needs to be altered, what needs to be done, why does it need to be done, and how we're going to do it?
The what, for, the what for me is, um, doing a final reconciliation, final reconciliation of any funds outstanding, which next year, there will be one fund outstanding that will still need to be reconciled, and that will be C I P. Once we do that why, uh, because then we will potentially have clean audits from here into the future, because we will have a, a baseline by how to do it and, 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 uh, just a...
So, it's all encapsulating in the final reconciliation?
Reconciliation, final reconciliation.
Okay, got it, anything?
Council?
For me, I would say our departments or anything that brings anything to the city. Uh, I wouldn't think that there should be any, any areas where we operate in the red, that they should be self-sufficient. And even if it's, uh, something that's not gonna happen overnight, we need to see how those areas of the city can be self-sufficient. Even whether it's five, six years from now, I know that's not gonna happen tomorrow, we need an increase with whether it's, you know, fees or, or anything. You know, aside from just right away, you know, raising taxes or stuff like that, some of these departments grow and adjust the way costs are gonna adjust, where, you know, it's gonna wait. Us is super to buy things and, you know, prices increase, and for like the city to stay in the same spot, uh, with some of our people in areas for many years.
So, how would you encapsulate it, but in a, a couple of words, where you're getting small, for instance?
Self-sufficient.
Self-sufficient, perfect, self-sufficient. I'm gonna look up about fiscal and/or financial sustainability.
How about removing all debt?
Remove it all debt? Ready to do anything else?
Without the financial, uh, sustainability, we're not able to accomplish any of the other projects that need to be accomplished, like the infrastructure and, uh, development of the downtown or any areas of the city. We need to first look at our financial, uh, finances and make sure that we are able to accomplish this. Otherwise, we cannot do anything, uh, with the infrastructure and all the new developments.
So, to encapsulate that, how would you put it in a word or two, or maybe a small phrase, what you just said?
Financial, uh...
Foundation?
Sustainability, I would say.
Really broad, um, financial, but, ability? Stability?
Yeah, I think that's what she said.
Yeah, that's what I said, yeah.
That's a sad one. Is that on time, is it reconciliation? Which, which, top?
Also, you, you see it on a different level, but now, thank you.
Which one of these bullets?
Sorry, I'm trying to listen to you, yeah?
How do you get that? Is by having balanced budgets and financial, oh, yes, those are the, or that is the why, okay? Then how would be, by doing these things, meaning your budget should be, there are these expenditures, your financial reconciliations would be actually having the audit to review this, or just more goals and objectives that we have, so, that's my...
So, which one of these do you think is objective, and for you, one of you has...
Uh, the objective would be the monetary reconciliation.
So, for as far as, uh, that's objective?
Uh, removing all debt.
Removing all debt is objective, okay?
And the other should be
So out of these right here, out of these right here, out of these four right here, which would be the one that we really need to really, uh, focus on and reconcile and get it all done with the plans and action steps and anything that will affect the other group? Is there one, or is there not? Which one would be prioritized on this one?
Well, the, the ones that are starred in the self-sufficiency fall under the overarching concept of financial stability. So, the, you know, if, if we look, you know, strategic, operational, tactical level, you know, the, the strategic goal is financial stability. You know, the, then you go operational. Tactical would be the reconciliation, you know, because that's, that's the action item, right? So.
So, which one do you think would be the, the one? At this point, like, you, you all have to say which one, the financial reconciliation or the financial stability?
But which level are we talking about? We talking about strategic?
What is the need? What is the need? Which one would be the one that would be, the one that would be the catalyst, I'll say, for the rest?
Financial sys- or financial
Reconciliation.
Stability.
I would disagree. I would say based off of your question, which is, which is the catalyst? The financial reconciliation, because that is going to then
How would that affect the rest?
Well, be- because, to me, the overarching goal is financial stability. How we get that, the first thing we need to do is finish the financial reconciliation, because then we know what we actually have, right? And that's, that's our problem right now. We, we have a lot of uncertainty, and that's being generous. So now, once you get that done at that tactical level, then you can figure out, well, are we actually self-sufficient? Or are, are we not, right? Do we have the, you know, resources to get rid of old debt earlier than what the plan is, right? So, so the financial stability, like I said, is that overarching goal, but the financial reconciliation is, is the action item that needs to be done first.
So we have experts on that, that would be, that would be it? Very well. So, so we got, put in number one right here? That makes sense? Thank you. Okay, and then the rest, this will be the catalyst for the rest. Now, it depends where these fall in, correct?
Well, like I said, I think the reconciliation is, is the catalyst that then provides the ability to become self-sufficient, remove old debt, you know, finance things going forward.
So do, would you agree or not to work on the financial stability first?
I think that's the mission, well.
I, I would agree with that.
I got it, I'm just, I'm just making this
What do you think, Jeffy, guys?
Gentlemen?
The reason why I said self-sufficiency, or be self-sufficient, is just from previous budget workshop and stuff that we've been a part of where we see on paper that, you know, where you can be operating in the red, you know, you need to balance, mindably, you need to balance the books, you know, all you want, and then the department still operating in the red. How do we get positive income from that department?
But on that, you mean different departments, right?
Enterprise ones, you know, like, you know, if an enterprise fund, just to keep it simple, uh, brings in ten thousand dollars a month, but it costs us, you know, sixteen thousand to operate it, how do we break even then?
Right.
How do we get there?
Is Mike on?
So we'll stop transferring money in the general fund for there.
Don't get me started.
We have five for our first break, in a couple, in five minutes, we'll take a break. In five minutes, we'll keep talking, but we have five minutes to make sure this is done. Keep going.
Any other?
Well, I would be agree with Mr. DeRusso. I think we need to do that, uh, financial reconciliation. Yeah, and that should be the, the top one there. I think the others will fall into place once we find out exactly where, yeah.
All right.
I, I, I mean, as far as in the final reconciliation, I think there's a process that they're working year to year. And once we finalize that, I think it'll be financial stability, where we know what we're spending. I think since I've been aboard, uh, the last numbers always finalize what you're gonna start off next year. So, uh, the most important ca- and the catalyst to everything would be our final reconciliation of everything that we have out there. You know, what is our fund balance looks at the end of the year, so that we can do the start of the next year. Now, financial stability, I think the city as a whole can, has it. But we have it in so many other, and, and I agree with, uh, Councilman Quinones, every, or, uh, like the water should be a, a, an enterprise that's self-sustained. Even our golf commission, or golf course should be self-sustained. But until we stabilize everything and everybody is aware of their responsibilities and goals from each department, that's how we're gonna get there. Uh, I think for many years, we've been doing the, what Karen Gleason mentioned a few minutes ago, and I think with, once we finalize everything, we'll be up to par. And I think even the council will be aware exactly where we're at and how we start in the following year.
You have any agreement with that? Thoughts? Okay, let's go ahead and take the break right now, very quickly, then we'll come in and we'll tackle this first second. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it my call?
Mic check, one, two. Mic check, mic check, one, two. Mic check on fourteen. Mic check. Mic check, one, two. Mic check, one, two.
So are we, are we gonna bet that number one? Okay. Okay. Great. Yep.
Okay, Mayor Board has, uh, voted and done the final reconciliation. So we're going to be looking at this, and there's criteria for this, in order for us to get to a specific decision and action steps and objectives and goals, okay? So on your packet, you should have received, uh, a, uh, sheet of paper. This is, uh, this is from an idea to reality. It should be, those are the simple steps that we're gonna go through, and these are questions we have to run this idea through. So any ideas of how, we're looking through that one there. Any ideas to bring the final reconciliation? Any ideas how we can get this thing here, where we need to go? Ideas, I'm looking for ideas right now.
We have to fill the position.
Okay, fill the position? With the right, with the right person? Okay, fill the position, anything else?
We have to, I'm sorry, I don't mean to dominate, uh, but we have to transition knowledge from, um, our interim to our new position.
Training?
No, just transition, transition knowledge from interim to the filled position. Linda to the next finance director.
Okay, you should have pushed the habit. What problem, okay? There'll be a transition.
Yes, transition.
This is what we need to clarify, clarify the issue, clarify the goal, clarify the idea. This is what we're doing right now. So, what would need to happen in order for us to get that financial reconciliation? That's the question. What would need to happen?
Currently, right now.
What can we do right now to start going into, uh, uh, to the final reconciliation?
I need more applicants. I need, I need more applicants. We only have one applicant right now. More applicants.
The second, the reason that is, is because financial reconciliation is only accomplished by the finance.
Right.
Nobody else is involved, and they're looking for the finance.
Yeah, but this is, this is important. So yes, thank you for that clarification. I did not know that, thank you. Anything else that we, that needs to happen for this thing to, to at least take issue and go?
Knowledge of G A S B.
Knowledge of?
G A S B.
G A S B? G A S B?
B. Governmental accounting standards board.
So that, would that be the transition? Knowledge transition?
Yes.
Okay, that would be the knowledge transition.
G A S B.
So once we get that, let's look at the big picture, of course, in the future of this. Once we get that, the question would be, what problem is this solving? Once we get the final reconciliation that it be done, what problem is this solving?
Consistency in our financials.
Okay, okay. Who does it benefit?
Administration and everybody?
Yeah, everybody.
Citizens in general.
Yeah.
Correct. And for the last one, you're filling up right now, with the success of, like, the decision. Is it transition and information after the G A S B and more applicants? Is there anything else that we need to do for that? Okay, this is the what, we still don't know what.
Accountability.
Accountability, what's that?
To the public.
Accountability to the public?
For the city's finances.
Okay.
It, I mean, we're achieving that. That's ultimately, I think, what we're achieving is accountability to the public for
Accountability to the public.
Taxpayer funds.
I guess with all respect, uh, we're, we're finalizing reconciliation as of today, right?
Next year. We'll have one fund next year.
Cause
CIP.
I can see the, the new vision or the vision, uh, that has been since we lost, uh, our last financial director is to continue vision to get somebody here. But right now, we have somebody here that has finalized the whole reconciliation up to par, so that whoever comes in, comes in with that flow, that everything's clear. Uh, I, I think that's one of the key things here, uh, cause we can, uh, go for the future of a new position, fill that in. Hopefully whoever's here is coaching and training the person next to him, so that we can continue rolling. And, and I think that's one of the key things. Where are we heading as far as reconciliation at the end of this year? By October first, we should have everything planned, and then next year, start fresh with, with deals, so. And, and I think the new position is very, very essential, but we've been waiting for three years for that position to be filled in.
We're gonna, we're gonna tackle that in a couple minutes.
Uh, the other, uh, the transition from coaching, developing, I think anybody in, in any organization will always have a backup. In case I get sick, I have a backup. And I think this goes to every department. Everybody should have, not just on the finances, it's everywhere, so.
So is everyone in line with this? So we need to work on these things in order to, you know?
I, I think, just for clarity sake, just for clarity sake, uh, there will be one fund still that has to be reconciled in FY twenty-five, twenty-six. And that, that will just have to roll to the next finance director. But it will only be one fund, and that's CIP, Capital Improvement Plan.
Uh, I guess my question, a lot of the ideas that the council might have to bring in, uh, to play for the future of our ci- uh, city, we bring it we bring it to you, and then finances put the numbers together, right?
That's correct.
That's the way it processes.
Mm-hmm.
So, until we have a reconciliation completely, then any ideas that this council brings in will be kind of at a, at a stand to know exactly how much money we got left, right?
That's, that's what we're pushing on, I mean, we simply have everything reconciled, but we will not have C I P reconciled fully. And it, and it's simply getting a clear picture of what was charged to C I P since, I believe it's fifteen, is that correct? Linda? C I P, two thousand fifteen? So knowing what was charged to C I P since two thousand fifteen, and reconciling every transaction in C I P up until today, that will take next year to achieve. That is what the financial, I'm sorry, our CPAs, our auditors, I should say, are telling us that we have to have that done next year. So that's our final reconciliation, all other funds will have been fully reconciled this year.
Cause I'm, I'm with JP, we know about water.
Yes.
We know about sewer.
Yes.
We know about a drainage problem, and we're working on that, and that has to go through finances most of the time, or every.
We can make decisions on everything, all of that. It's just simply a final reconciliation on, by the audit, I mean, as approved by the auditors on C I P.
And, and on the financial reconciliation, if this council will come in and say, well, I wanna spend, or we wanna spend an additional million dollars on streets in operation, we still have to wait till everything's
That's correct.
Till all the dust settles before we can.
That's correct.
Now, we already have a commitment on that, right? We already have some money set aside for streets that are already in the
Yes, that's already budgeted.
This year's reconciliation. So for the citizens, we're not delaying anything, we just
We, we have plenty of funds that have been set aside for projects that simply have to be fully completed. And so, we have plenty of street projects to work on, and we have funds in COs to do those projects. So we have plenty of funds to do those specified projects. Now specifying new projects may be a different story, but anything that's already been specified under streets that we have already allocated funds for through the capital, or, I'm sorry, through the certificates of obligation, we've already got those assigned, and we just need to articulate, or manage it and develop it and, and complete it, execute it.
Now, am I out of topic, or I'm sorry?
Yeah, I'm gonna try to, I'm gonna bring you back.
Okay, right, right.
Now, what else would we need to do to make sure to get this thing started as quickly as possible? It seems like this is very important, which it is. So, is there anything else that we need to put on here, so we start getting to see which one we need to tackle first? Cause this has a sequence already, if you see it, you know which one's gonna go first.
And actually, G A S B needs to be first. That has to be first, then you fill the position, then you transition, you know, hopefully get more applicants, but G A S B is the most important thing. The knowledge of G A S B, the understanding of G A S B.
Who would have to have that knowledge? Who would have to have?
Whoever we hire for the position.
So who would have to have that knowledge?
It, it'd be finance.
So he has to come first?
G A S B has to be first, he has to have that knowledge.
Yes, they have to have that, so first, this is what I'm thinking, you need to have more applicants. Okay, number two, out of all those applicants, you're gonna fill one, the position. Then this is transfers here, and then it holds accountability. Thoughts? Just an idea.
Right.
Does, does that make sense? So this is what we need to tackle for more app, why are we not getting more applicants? What's, what's the problem, what's the challenge here? Anybody?
Del Rio.
That's very broad.
You went there too. Thanks, sorry I didn't have to.
You know, we're, we're, we're holding the wall, man, you know, nobody wants to come to Del Rio, and, you know, and that's been our problem all along, you know, we have positions, but we can't fill them, because we're a small town, you know, and then we're, we're not San Antonio, we're not Laredo, we're not San Angelo, you know, we're, we're, we're just a small border town, and they ask, where?
So, we are a small town?
Salary.
Okay, that's, could be salary, of course, that, now, if we want to fill this position, there's gotta be more applicants out, there has to be people looking for G A S B, that's specific, that's it. I think that's a specific, you just can't get anybody off the street. So it's gotta be specific, so what are we looking for in these applicants? They gotta be G A S B, correct? Okay, good, so what are we, what else are we looking for, for that, so we can target specifically on this particular position to help us out? What are we needing?
Certifications.
Okay?
Certifications.
So now, I'm sure they're there, how can we get them here? That's the issue. There are people who have, so how can we get them to Del Rio?
One of the things is recruiting, a stronger recruiting, which, you know, I, I agree with our attorney, a lot of times, the ace is our salary cap, but we can't just rely on G A S B to go and find us anybody. I think it's something that we need to have within house, a stronger recruiting to go, because that's not just the only position that we have that is empty. So, I think it, it's a stronger recruiting and emphasizing the vision statement that we have, and actually, the city, what is the city, you know, where are we heading? And why, you say the house, now why do you wanna come to Del Rio? It is a safer security city, it is something that if you have kids, they're gonna grow in a, in a safe environment in the school system. But me, as, as, and probably JP would strongly say the same thing, and everybody that hires, we need a stronger recruiting force within the city to go out and bring people into our community. Cause no, you know, it's like JP, nobody wants to come to Del Rio, cause they think there's a little hole in the state of Texas, but once they're here and they see it, it's a different version.
They fall in love with it.
Yeah.
Sir?
I did.
Sir?
I was gonna say, so could we train and certify our own people?
Yeah, exactly.
Become G A S B certified?
Great question, now, what, what I understand, but behind that, that connection feel? Questions feel, I'm sorry.
Well.
I think yes, you can, but you, you, at this moment in time, we need someone who already has that certification at this moment in time. I, I don't think that it, that the answer is yes, in the long run, but in the short run, we need someone at this moment in time who knows it fully, because we don't want to deviate from the path we've been on for the last year and a half.
Okay, great question, does that answer the question? Yes, but not at this time. Thank you for asking, now, the second thing we're recruiting, recruiting, now, now, just think something to mind, marketing and branding. Are we marketing this job? Are we, do we need to market this job? What is our function of marketing, how, what does the marketing look like? Is it, what, are we doing social media, A I, what are we doing?
We're doing, we haven't done social media, we are using the T, T M L, Texas Municipally website, which is where all government employees go to look for other jobs.
So, up to right now, it's not working?
Right.
So this is where we need to get ideas of what we can do to change the recruiting procedure or process in order to fill in this position? What do we need to do in order for that to happen?
We go to social media and put it out there in the social media, at the same time, what Del Rio has to offer, not just in wages for that position, but what we have to offer here in Del Rio.
I heard some of you mentioned that you do, but what do, I'm just curious, this is for everybody, we're all here, what does Del Rio have to offer?
Quality of life, I, I believe quality of life. There is a sense of community, there's a sense of history, there's a sense of culture and ownership of the community. There's a, there's a sense of family.
Family.
All of those things, and it's a safe community.
Safe, safety. Anything else? What do we have to offer here for someone that's not on the server?
So, from the employee perspective, Ms. Perk, I touched on it, is working for the city is like being part of the family. So, I think we need to emphasize that to applicants about the closeness of the workforce.
I, thus, cause that's, everybody, every culture values family. Everyone. Do we have that now on our marketing, or do we have that on our branding, or do we have that in our social media?
I don't believe so.
Okay?
It's never been branded.
Fam, sir?
So, just to go, thinking back on what's happened, we're family, right? We're dedicated, we're here for the long term, we're here to provide the infrastructure and growth for the city of Del Rio for, by brand, kids, their kids, however, at the very beginning, when we started, there was something mentioned about transitioning from the knowledge. So we have people who claim right now that that new knowledge should be transitioned to them, because they're in that position already, hardly recruited.
It's, it means grow your own within house.
I like their idea, we have the boards, you know what, use this one right there, we already use it, put it up there. What do you, what do you do? You know what, we're gonna touch on that later, on top of that board, I want you to put down parking lot. Parking lot is an idea that we can really, that we can, just put parking lot right there. And put, um, I'll be pretty, that's a little small, we can put a grow your own, put grow your own, cause that's another topic, I'm there, but we need, so we're gonna, that's important. And for right now, we're gonna put our whole, that's put it right there, does that make sense? That, okay, so back to the social media recruiting, social media, branding, marketing, how is our branding or marketing just for this position? Cause from this one, we can branch off to the other positions that are needed. But what is the process and the system that we have for recruiting this particular very important? Because you all said financial reconciliation is the final thing, and we need it, so what are we doing now that is not working? What's a sacred cow that we need to get rid of? Or do we need to add, or do we need to ship, or do we need to redo it again? What is our branding, what is our marketing? What is, what is, what is, what is being done now that is not working? Anyway.
I don't know, I have an applicant, an applicant in an interview next week, but I, but one does not encapsulate a true search or a filling of a position, you know, hopefully that one will be exactly what we want.
Okay.
But certainly, just having that applicant base to pull from.
So we need more applicants.
Right.
So how, that's my thing, what's the net cash that we're bringing people in? So I was asking, what do we have to offer? A sense of community, a sense of culture, a sense of family, a sense of safety? Are we, are we pushing those things?
Yes.
Right, are we pushing them to the, to the max? Hey, this is what we can offer you here.
I think we need
It's not just a salary, at least somebody mentioned it, it's not just the salary. What is, what is gonna benefit you? So we're looking at this, I'm looking at, I'm not looking at a single, you know, right out of college kind of person, I'm looking for somebody that, hey, I want stability, I want community, I want some type of culture, I've got a family of two or three, I want, we're looking for somebody, we're actually looking for a family to fill this position. Cause the kids are gonna be going to our schools, our high schools, you know, either they're gonna be, the wife or the husband are gonna be going to the we need a family to fill this position right here. So instead of going for one, one person, let's look at for that structure of family, what can we offer the family? Cause sometimes, decisions are maybe, it's good for me, but it's not good for us. But a man or anybody would say, if it's good for all of us, I will jump into it, does that make sense? That's the sense of family, you were mentioning. So we're looking for a family. Does that make sense? We're looking for a family to come in. So this is what we're gonna offer the family, really, culture, family, and safety.
Family is a very important factor, due to the fact that you will be working, but you need to consider your family. What are the things that they can, like the school? Your school, of course, you travel across Del Rio in fifteen minutes if you get a traffic light, and things like that, you know? And these are important for the family. So that would be one of the factors that they would consider, you know, your family. You're thinking not just about yourself and the position that you're gonna be hired for and the wages, but you also have to consider your family as a whole, yeah.
Totally agree with that, so how can we do that? Cause it obviously is not working right, and so what can we change, or what can we do? This is where ideas come from, say, have we tried this, have we done this, and we hash out the ideas, and then we make goals, and then the action steps.
We have not used social media enough. We have not used social media enough to advertise that position.
So how would we do, how would we use social media, I, I don't know much about that, I don't have something related to it, you know? Exactly what you do, but what can we use, what's the, what's the, I don't even know how to pronounce this or say this, what's the latest trend for this to happen? I know there's Indeed, there's other, other applications that we can use, what are we not using that we need to use? Do we have a, a social media expert in the house?
Peter.
I thought it was Perk.
No, they are Perk.
I couldn't follow your P P page, they, they kind of
Uh, what, I mean, what, what do you see on, on, on the trend, or what's happening?
I don't think change will be, not every, it would be ninety days, or every sixty days. Like the reels are really big, yeah, they're supposed to be
Reels, okay, that's an idea, so let's put down reels right here, I, I, I don't know what that is, but
So what we're trying to do is, I always try to do like a P O V in our department, try to seem like a point of view of showcasing, like, is your Del Rio, this, we did like a movie at the park the other day, we did the training at fire department. We're trying to showcase each of the departments, that way they get a, they get the perspective of what they would be part of if that was, the city of Del Rio was their workplace.
I love that, pull that up, we're showing that double header, comma right there, the client or the position that we're going to be filling, we're looking at an age gap, a bell curve, or what? What's the bell curve for age for this person? All right, now, anybody that comes in, or, no, we gotta get a bell curve, what are we looking for, from what, what year? More or less, anybody?
Forty and above.
Sixty.
Forty what?
Forty to sixty.
Forty to sixty is the bell curve, okay, so forty to sixty is the bell curve, okay? Forty to sixty, so we're looking at fifty or anything like that. Now, is a fifty-year-old going to be looking at reels?
No.
My last is I'm in my fifties and the answer's no.
Lady, we're looking for the specific person, let's bait them, is not, that's the proper word, to say, hey, who we, we're not looking at everybody, we want a specific fish.
G F O A T.
Okay.
Which Government Finance Officers of Texas.
Okay, what does that mean?
G F O A T is the organization, that's who you would advertise with.
Okay, so we, we wouldn't advertise or brand or market on, on our outside?
We would, but, no, I'm just saying, that would be one of the avenues.
Do we have these people here, this type of person here?
Yes.
So what are we doing?
That's all it is.
That's all it is?
Yes.
So do we have, so you, so you're telling me this is an entity that has these people that we need?
Yes.
So how are we fishing for them?
We have advertised, but we need to do something more than just advertising.
There should be incentives, that's what you need, you need incentives.
Okay, incentives are good, but let me say, incentives only last a short time, hey, I got ten thousand dollars, oh, I'll take it! Just for that, but all that works off, what's gonna keep them here?
Yeah, well
What's going to keep, that would be a great idea, certain jobs and positions that works perfectly.
That gets them here.
Yes.
And once they get here, they have to renegotiate what
Okay, that, that would not, I would think that would be very, uh, uh, um, it would be lacking integrity there, because then we would have to really work on this right here.
Right.
To keep them here.
Correct, correct, because the problem that they have here is you have, you need the expertise, that's the first
I understand it, I understand.
Then, then after that, you have to be able to judge, juggle what's the priority to reach that sustainability and to reach that, you know, the financial stability.
Okay, yeah, that they bring in, I think they bring in that.
That would be the goal, so the financial stability would be the goal.
Exactly.
The objective would be to bring someone that's knowledgeable for G A S B, and then the, the performance indicators would be
You're absolutely right, but how do we bring them in? That's my question. You are correcting the steps, but how, what are we gonna, how are we going to get them in here? One of the ideas is reels, how else can we get them here?
The only, the only way, like I said, is by salary and
Only is an absolute.
Are they?
Only is an absolute.
Yes, but that's really your, that's really what the bottom line is.
So, this is the only way we can get them, there is no other way.
But, but I think, I think the bigger picture question, Linda, is how do we get people that are interested to then discuss salary? Right? Because we have to get them interested in coming here, and then we can talk salary, benefits, you know, and, and all that. So, that's, you know, not only from the, what are we marketing, like you said, but where are we marketing?
Exactly.
So, in the twenty twenty census, the two biggest demographic groups in Del Rio were basically under eighteen and senior citizens. One of which does nothing but social media and one of which doesn't do social media, basically, right?
Yeah, you're right.
So, we, we have to identify, just big picture, not necessarily advertising, uh, for jobs, but we have to identify how to communicate better, which has already been mentioned by someone. Just, just across the board, like, about the movie in the park, you know? Was there anything other than social media? Because like I said, some people are gonna see that, but some people are not, right? Um, so, I, I don't know, um, how many times offhand, we've actually, you know, I know that the Chamber had done a booth at TML a few years ago, but the, but, but the city of Del Rio hasn't, right? I, um, does GFOAT have a, like?
A region here?
Annual conference or something like that?
Yes, they do.
They have two conferences a year.
Send someone there to, to markets, stuff like that, be- because you, you're gonna get a lot of people, right? At, at the TML annual conference, yeah, you, you have a lot of elected officials, you have a lot of city managers, but you have a lot of staff.
Yes.
And even if the finance director's not necessarily there, city manager, assistant city manager, whoever, is gonna be going around the tables, right? And, and so, things like that, because that's, that's gonna broaden that exposure.
Yes.
Well, they have regional, uh, GFOAT is a.
I understand that, but.
What I'm saying is they have workshops.
But my point is, are, are we sending people from Del Rio, whether it's to GFOAT, whether it's to anything related to, you know, city engineer or city attorney, you know, judge, to their, to their conferences?
Send people to these, um, conferences?
Yeah, be, because you can only expose so many people to the social media to get people interested. The, the other part, uh, is that will then increase the exposure from the word of mouth.
Right.
So, we had a couple.
Networking.
Okay, and that, that's what everybody should be doing when we go to TMLs, when we go summits.
Councilor, you're, you're talking about HR.
Yes, right, yes.
Some cities, they send out flyers to the director of whatever department, whenever they're recruiting, maybe they see them here or several different departments. So, that city has the job advertisement, um, to write and mold its salary, there's summaries of their community, there's a link. So, sometimes I'm even going to these conferences, just sending out special flyers, uh, to different cities, to the head of that department. Other cities are doing.
Bob? Fire?
Why not?
Put down flyer?
Well, it is, and it's a low cost.
Sir?
Uh, just a quick, I guess, question. What, can you remind me again what GASP is?
Governmental.
Governmental Accounting Financial Board. It's a, uh, it's the board that sets all the laws that municipalities, any kind of government school has to, has to follow.
But is it more like the?
It's more like, um, it's governmental law is what it is.
It's not a certification.
Governmental laws and outlines of how your financials and your.
So, it's just knowledge of?
Reported, shared.
And how do you gain that, knowledge of GASP?
Basically, thank you for asking, because that's the important, that's the, that's the issue the city has, is GFOAT and GFOT, and, um, uh, they offer certifications. To get those certifications, you have to, first of all, have a college degree. Once you have that college degree, part of that degree goes towards that certification. There are exams, just like the CPA exam, five exams, take it. They give you, you cannot sit in CPA exam, you can sit for all five exams. In GFOT, to become a CGFO, which I am, you have to sit for all five exams, they only let you take two exams at once because they're very, very difficult exams. The problem is, is that GFOT is required in most cities from North Texas to East Texas, to Houston. In San Antonio, which is where I was a controller as employee, and then I chose to go for the ways, but anyway, um, there, they don't hook at GFOT. So, from San Antonio, south and west, they prefer CPAs. So, your CPA exam is actually technically a lot easier and a lot quicker to get, but again, you need your accounting, you need accounting hours, and it requires thirty hours of accounting. So, that's what the problem.
So, you're asking if there's a certification for it?
I'm a certified government officer, I was a CPA, when I went to Houston, and my boss, my city manager told me I can't do CPA, they wanted CGFO, because they pushed that. In San Antonio, when I became the controller, they wanted a CPA.
So, what's needed here is, is the, um, what is it?
We don't require, we don't require.
You don't require it?
No, we don't require certification, and you can learn about GASP without a certification.
So.
So, that could be a loophole right there.
You can learn GASP till, till you get through the, through GFOT.
So, we move back to, they go back to what we said. Uh, grow your own, why don't we have grow our own? And that'll be, that's, that's where we at, uh, right here, look. Again, bring that one over here to grow your own, right there. Then, if that's a possibility, you don't have to be, uh, I, I, honestly, I didn't understand what you said. But, but I'm sure somebody else has a thing for that certification now, and I think that would help out, that would, another possibility of that, but if, if, I don't know, if the, if the organization says, you know, it has to be, then it has to be, but we can always.
And you can get it through GFOT.
Okay, but that, that, that's another subject, but yeah, we, we can do that. Any other ideas of how we can start, we're just talking about recruiting the position, you had something, ma'am?
Uh, we have a strong federal presence, and a lot of the spouses that are coming here have, um, different knowledge and expertise. And so, Matt, we always think just about the dates, but then we also have, um, border patrol, we have our federal court house, and a lot of those spouses, sometimes you're looking for paint, and they're not, even in the state of Texas, and they're, maybe they're making the decision.
So, how do we get to them? That's perfect, do we have to go to the conferences? I think, I think, uh, networking would be the, the, the thing for that, but we need people to go out there and do the actual level of networking.
Well, just networking are local leaders at the federal level here, and they know somebody's coming in, they can say, look at all these great positions in our community.
Networking is everything.
Because those spouses are, are too busy trying to figure out whether they come to their spouse or not.
So, these are just ideas right here of how we can just recruit that person to fill in that position, to start going with the financial reconciliation. So, that's what we need, we're looking for somebody from forty to sixty-year-old, family unit, that, uh, if possible, has a GAS, SV, correct? G A S B, and, so this is the thing, what are we doing about this? This, diving into this, say, how can we get that person in the next, what, sixty days, ninety days? When fiscal year start, October?
October.
Two months, sixty days, can we do this in sixty days?
A- absolutely. I'm gonna try, certainly.
Almost anything's possible.
You, you know, Pastor, I, I guess, on the retail business, we're always recruiting.
Always.
You never stop. And I think in, in the city, and this is something that, that positions are very important. It's, first of all, it's finances, because they're the ones that tell us how much we're gonna spend and everything. The next one will be our city manager, our attorney, you know? The, the key components that are driving the city should be recruited twenty-four, seven, seven days a week, when we're out there, inside, wherever we're at. I, I think on that concept, even the console or recruiting, uh, individuals, you go give your business card to a person that is a potential candidate, not a guaranteed candidate, but a potential candidate that eventually they might wanna move to Del Rio or, or, or start over, or whatever it is. Uh, in, in the history of our community, and this is here, we are always, until we already lost that individual, then we're recruiting. I think you just gotta be recruiting, even if you have that important individual there, you still have to be recruiting out there, finding out who might wanna come to Del Rio. Maybe as, you know, an imprint is a starter, uh, uh, an assistant to the finance director, an assistant to the attorney, an assistant to whatever key position, because we're all looking into retirement in the future, you know, and we can't wait around and say, okay, if this person's gonna retire, now we gotta go recruit. And now, we're already two years into looking for a position, a person, instead of having somebody already in the grudge of getting into it. I, I think it's something that we, we have to, and, and all those components are there, but it's only as good as the people that are going to go out and recruit, that are going to go advertise the city of Del Rio, they're gonna do their job, because, uh, you can put it all into play there with flyers and everything. Some of us have to be very enthusiastic about bringing people into the city. And not about the bad thing, but about the good thing, because sometimes they hear all the bad things about, I mean, I remember when we were doing interviews with, uh, Shauna, first thing is, so why did you hear about Del Rio? Because there, there are rumors out there about the city of Del Rio, there's sometimes a speck of people saying, oh, I'm not gonna work there, because there it's a cutthroat city, they're gonna cut your throat within three months and you're gone. Well, you know, that is what's out there. Now, we have to change that persona of the city of Del Rio and the whole concept, because you can go out there and do all that recruiting, social media and all that, but when they get to the city, what is the report that they're gonna get? That's the majority of the people that come in, so, oh, it's not the salary, it's the environment that I'm gonna come in. We all talk about the city of Del Rio being the best and safe and secure, but sometimes the rumors and gossip in this community is the one that kills the person coming in. That, that's me, I mean, I, I, I live on recruiting seven days a week. If I go to a restaurant, and that individual gives me the best quality of service, I give him my business card and say, hey, if you ever think of a career change, look me up. I'm not guaranteeing anything, but I'm asking him, hey, if you ever think, and I tell you what, I have two young ladies that I hire out of local businesses, they're still with me, five years.
So, how can we do this here for a city of Del Rio for this particular position? So, reels, conferences, networking, flyers, grow your own? Any other ideas you might have? And how to bring people in?
Come on, guys. How do we recruit you guys?
Any thoughts?
Mr. Charles?
Sir? The, the best thing probably, in my opinion, is to, is when, when you're looking and you get candidates, you're gonna have to make it easy for them. Hey, this is gonna be a good part, just wipe them over here and get thirty thousand dollars less, we need to go to a city of quarter the size and make more. That doesn't make any sense. And then, like you said, there's a stigma in Del Rio that you're right on the border, and there are people jumping over this creek that nobody sees, and, you know, you don't know anybody, so you're in this part of the state. So, I think we need to put money into when we get, start getting some people that are out there, actually start actively recruiting them, and then bring them over here on our dime.
How do we get pilots?
And it's kind of what the hospital does too. Bring them over here, have somebody that actually tours them, bring them through, shows them, it's not that scary. Those are the things we have, social media, so, when you're restaurants, you kind of, those, the police department has to be about what the product is, and give them an idea of what they're coming to, and it'll make it easier. But if they, they come over here on their dime, or if they come over here with just a little per diem, you still don't know where you're going. You're coming over here, you can go to the worst part and think this is what all Del Rio is, but it's not. We need people that are due, that are actual recruiters, that are guides, that are gonna promote us and show us what's going on, and I think that'll help a lot, once we get some people that are interested. Because I don't know how many people you can probably get that are interested, but you never hear from them again, you know, they've got the requirements, but you just, mm, you know, I'm not gonna do it, make it easy for them. Hey, we're gonna pay for you to come over here, we're gonna house you, we're gonna feed you for three days, come check us out, and why don't you put the money into it? I think that would help with this community, just to let them see what this is all about. It worked on me, I had no clue, I thought it was terrible over here, and I came over here and it's nothing.
How are you doing now?
This is about to get four years.
And I came from over here, I came from the same city.
There you go. What do you all have, nobody go over there? So, what you're saying is bring them in and show them the community, the culture, the family, and safety.
Yeah, and pay for it all, I mean, make it, make it an easy decision to come over here, don't, you, we're gonna take care of them, all you gotta say is yes, and give us freedom of your life, thoughts?
Councilor DeRus had a great key thing.
I mean, that, that's great, once you're actually in the recruiting process, but again, I think we need to go down to the base level, which is, you have to find the people and get them interested before they're even willing to come here and visit.
So, I think you will if you do that, because that's, I know I had the same issue, and Mr. Chavez did that, because when he interviewed me, my first question to my boss was, um, talking about Mr. Chavez, is that's the border. I don't wanna sixty-seven years old, I don't wanna go to the border, it's dangerous. And then, I asked that question when I was in an interview with Mr. Chavez, and he said it's not that way at all. And, you know, I was still period, but sure enough, it turned out to be, right? And, and the, the thing is, is what you, and what the, she, she, what she was saying is so true, because it, it, you don't know, you have, you know, you hear everything in the world bad about border towns, period. It doesn't say specifically names, but you hear of that. So, you're assuming that all border towns are the same way, Del Rio is not. And that is one of the things that I love about Del Rio, it is not that way. And I think that's part of the problem with recruiting, because they look at the, the, you know, the job description, or the job, I should say, because it is a GFOT, it is a GFOT, it's there. Um, SGR, which is my employer, is there too, they're, they're promoting for. The problem is, is that can create a perception that the advocate, the applicant has.
So, if you're looking at that.
I really do, I wanna jump out of my skin.
Between forty and sixty, that would be my age group. And so, a lot of my classmates don't live here, so you can take a step back, recruit people that are from here, because they have aging here, so their property's still here, they'll wanna move to a bigger city. And so, maybe advertising, a lot of people actually, uh, most of them have Facebook, most of them are, um, in tune with the local community. And so, maybe if they're considering, you know, as a parent or Asian, they're having to take care of them, one of, some of the police are always one that, and the one that's gonna take care of the parents. So, maybe looking at that, targeting that demographic, then let's say they, their spouse also has another skill or certification, so I think, um, maybe not even directly outside looking.
Maybe, maybe some quick recruit, uh, agree.
Well, look, can, can I, uh, Pastor, can we ask Cassandra, Cassandra and Shauna, Linda? Cassandra, what, what is, I mean, you came to the city and applied, what drove you?
So, what I need to apply here was that my partner was already working here. So, um, after we decided that we wanted to start a family, uh, we had decided between the two cities where he was working and where I was working, and he showed me around the community, and it was something that we both enjoyed. And so, he convinced me after a little bit of time that this would be the best thing we were both around.
Andrew, um, do we need to make the, uh, ideas list for actually? Any ideas on this? Because we're just trying to fill this in, if, if we can't move past this, we gotta, we gotta get this, we gotta, we gotta hire them in the next sixty days.
Well, I think if, if that was a point, um, that we, that someone acted for you, I mean, I feel like we could.
It worked.
Have more events that are SFB or family oriented. I think one of the events that we did a lot of two years ago is our employee day, because I think what we have often employed, these are marketing heads that can go out.
Yes.
Because there are people that are saying, hey, we had this great event that was a lot of fun, and when's the next one? And, yeah, if you, if you work here, this will be the environment you're coming into, okay? Um, so maybe, maybe more, like, SFB or family days.
So, you're talking about networking, family day events, okay?
Oh, my God, city of Del Rio, I'm mixing my marketing up. Uh, that's, that's my guy, I'm telling you, well, because I, I pulled my, that was one of the things that I like. That I pulled from, um, we had, uh, we had these, um, these all-staff activity days.
Okay.
Yes. Yes, so we had these activity days, we're all staffed and provided, and they got to interact with each other outside of workplaces. And so, there's some of the team members that put that event together a year are here, but, um, making those, more of those events throughout the year that way.
And advertising, maybe just get them off the, if you have a building.
Yes, I just, um, wanted to add on to the, like, a little bit more about the financial stability.
Yes, I just, um, wanted to add on to the, like, a little bit more about financial stability. I was writing some notes, because I think the strategy is to transition knowledge and train the department. And we can achieve that, like, as we were saying, by network, networking, recruiting from like the city of Del Rio and also training the current staff, because those are the ones that build up the department. But I think another strategy also for financial stability is setting financial policies that meet levels to be self-sufficient as two young persons are saying. Because once we do the reconciliation, to me, that's short term, because they will be achieving in the year. But we also have to think long term. And I think those policies carry on forever until it is changed again. And then the last strategy I think would be transparency for the community. So they communicate with the city council and are in support of these policies. Um, so that way, if we have transparency and the community knows what works with our projects, by our meetings, by, you know, marketing, whatever it is that we're doing, they're in support, they let the council know. And that way, when they're making these difficult decisions, they know you have the support of the community. So.
But they don't, that's a big issue and I think it needs to be handled, that's a big, that is very valuable to me.
Okay.
Mr. Chavez, this, uh, this position has been open for about a year and a half. And early on, we received multiple applicants. And each, each one, whether, some didn't qualify or had the experience, but the ones that did ended up dropping. And so I think whatever we had said is on target as far as the salary, uh, showing them around. But when we asked these individuals, what drew you from withdrawing? The main thing was, these are high professional, uh, individuals looking for a particular job, right? And the main thing was that they did a lot of research. And so they researched the dynamics of the city and also the sustainability of the city. And that's what drew them away. So going back, yeah, we need to do the reconciliation. And I think before anything, we need to fix and work, well, fix our house first before really going out and recruiting, because those are things that these individuals are really looking at. How solid and sustainable a party we actually get the best of.
How much hard is it, am I going to have to either fix it? That's, that's the thing is, how much time, because this takes a lot of hours.
I think you said, um, how would you work that? Is that, that often, you know, you would say, like, please, what we have now, what we have, that's what we have. Um, how would you work that?
Working environment, would that be it?
Or fix what we have now.
Fix our house.
Fix our house, I guess that's, that's, um, everyone's, right? Fix our house, fix what we have now. Um, I think that goes along again, we, the thing we need about the vision, I think that was looking about, because we need to see what we're getting. Like, okay, those you're seeing, we're going to work on right now, okay? Uh, so.
So would we be able to reach out to our candidates who dropped out? Right, and we don't know how far, how soon to them? And we're in a position now, which is, we can be here, we, we apply. For those candidates who have already been here and showed interest, we could probably reach out to them.
Good one, good one.
We have, um, five minutes, five minutes break, please, come back, we're going to ask you some, hopefully, we have seen.
How about?
Last minute break, last minute break.
Uh, what we do what's the can number two, which is this one and we're trying sustainability. So we have number one, number three, number four, number five, and number six. Which one would you like to tackle next? Which one would you like to vote on next? Number one, number three, four, five, or six. What are the number? One being efficient and effective governance, three being downtown department, four being economic development and redevelopment, number five sustainable infrastructure, number six is strong neighborhood.
Or anything else?
Yeah, or anything else that's not on the list that you deemed necessary, we can vote on that. Okay?
I'm consistent.
America.
Alright, um, everybody's going, everyone's ready? Very well, okay, I think one of his number.
Yeah.
Number one got your name?
Yeah.
Okay, number one, which is efficient and effective governance. Where do we start? Number one, efficient and effective governance. Anybody want to chime in for an idea?
Constructive communication.
Constructive? Constructive communication in this area, okay?
Hey, everybody understand their roles and responsibilities?
Roles and responsibilities? Anything else? The two constructive communication and roles and responsibilities?
I think.
What is it? Uh, pillars of support? Pillars of support?
I think of a balanced. Knowing your inputs, your outputs by department and by division. Your inputs, your outputs, your efficiencies, your effectiveness measures.
You talking about metrics?
Metrics.
Okay, put down metrics. Yeah. Alright, uh, constructive communication, you mentioned that. Can you elaborate a little bit more on that?
Sometimes we talk about things, uh, we plan things, we talk about things that we can't achieve, or we spend a lot of time criticizing. If we could just focus on, uh, talking about our goals and how we can achieve them and how we can achieve them together, which ties into the role and responsibilities. And who does what and everybody stays in their lane. But in key, like during the budget process too, when we're developing the budget, talk to the department heads to see what their priorities are. Because sometimes they end up cutting the most important things that you want and even the ones that you don't want. So if they talk to you, you can help fire or tell them back from their issue.
We said roles and responsibilities.
I did.
Sir, will you elaborate on that a little bit more?
Well, I think everybody here has, the council has a role to play on communications and everything. And attorney has a role to play, our city manager, and of course, the most important would be our staff. And I think sometimes we want to play staff instead of our roles. Uh, the same thing with different positions within the city, everybody wants to play different roles. And if you stay within your role, I think everybody, the working environment would be great. Uh, and I think that's what we do in our, in our business, uh, we stay within our role, we don't alleviate and go to another side. Cause I think it's, all positions are very important, but trusting each other and communicating well will hold us into a higher, you know?
Okay.
So, so that's okay. So back, back on that, that would be the structure of government.
So you mentioned pillars of support, you want to elaborate on that a little bit more?
But kind of, well, it's kind of, I think what it's all, on all of our minds is roles and policies, right? Our duties, responsibilities, right? But when we, when we come forward to present, right, and communicate, we need that support from everyone over there.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. Methods, now you want to elaborate on that a little bit more?
I just think there's got to, uh, goals and objectives have to be measurable and attainable. And you can't, uh, measure something unless you're measuring your own metrics.
Okay. Out of all these four right here that you see right now, um, which one would be a ca- would there be a catalyst? Would there be one that would affect the rest of them and bring them up higher or make them better? Is there one that would say, yeah, this one right here would eliminate one or the other, would, would there be a catalyst there? Not? Priorities then? Any priorities? Which would be the first one that we probably need to tackle?
My thought would be the communication, I think that is more foundational, which will then lead to the others happening better. Not, not, you know, simply by having better communication, but that's an important first step.
Okay, communication, would everyone agree? I want to make sure that everyone agrees on this one, so we move along now. You agree with that one?
Right.
So we're gonna tap that? Okay, let's, let's start right there, communication. So the good idea, how can we make constructive communications better? So what, what are the elements of communication, let's break down the terms. What are the elements of communication, anybody?
Trust.
Trust?
Listening.
Listening? Respect? Respect? Okay? So how, so maybe? Okay, these are things, these are, these are things that are gonna come up to the table, let me ask you this. Has the city in the past two or three years done something good?
Yes.
Uh, I'd like to think so.
What, 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 what have we done?
We opened this, the new skate guard.
The new, the, the new skate what?
Skate guard.
Skate, okay, so, did we celebrate that?
Yes.
Okay, what else have we done? Anybody?
Scott team added a bunch of shake structures to make that experience more enjoyable.
Did we celebrate that? Well, we did, 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 we need to celebrate that, we need to celebrate and let everybody know, hey, this is what's going on, this is what's going on. Communication, communication.
We've accomplished two audits in one year, we've accomplished.
In one year?
Assess in one year.
Complete audits?
Two audits complete in one year. We've, we've assessed our water infrastructure and found three major, uh, things that we have to address immediately. And we've addressed all of them financially with grants, funding, uh, water infr- or water rate studies. With all, all of, everything that needs to be in place to sustain, uh, a viable future for us.
Wow, that's awesome. Did that get, did all these things get celebrated? Why?
Because they're not sexy. Right? They're great accomplishments, don't give me off.
That's great.
But, but things like the skate garden, things like the upgrades to GI Forum Park, paving a new street.
Yeah.
That is what people can see.
Right.
And so that honestly is what we spend a lot more time talking about, be- because. So, it's a long conversation trying to explain to someone why those two audits are important.
Yeah, I, I understand, if you do something, Mr. Chavez, I'm, I'm proud of it, it affects everyone. And everybody's getting celebrated because of parks and everything, which is great, but you didn't, how would that make you feel?
Smile, man, smile. You're like, yeah, whatever. I'm talking my.
And this is what happens underlying, everybody, business, family, uh, uh, infrastructure cities. If you don't get, hey, at least, hey, we want to thank Mr. Chavez for that, or want to thank, uh, the city manager for this. Just acknowledgement of communication is vital. Why is communication when you really want to communicate, you want to make people feel one thing and one thing only, value.
Pastor, that brings up a, a topic that came up during our meeting before I talked to one of the fire, uh, fighters. And he said that, um, throughout COVID, throughout, uh, the warming centers, all these different functions. Where the firefighters stepped up and put in their time, they were never celebrated, they were never acknowledged.
We, 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 things like, even if it's small steps, I mean, it was not quote unquote sexy, but those things need to be celebrated. Cause you do things that never get acknowledged, you do things, I know that, that never get acknowledged, you're not, you're not here for the, you know. But it's good to say, hey, thank you, hey, thank you for, thank you, thank you for, thank you, just, just a simple thank you, say, hey, write a letter in the paper or something, hey, thank, then like, wow. Value, communication is about value. So the systems you put in place for communication have to be valued, sir.
So, like in regards to infrastructure, you know, we, we have teams, great team, I think they're very wonderful. But it's the ones at the bottom of the total bowl that don't feel that value. And a few examples, we had guys working on the heat. So, men, that has been that. And all we did is, there's some water on the street, it's coming in, and just bash the city. But I guarantee Monday morning, I'm gonna value those work ethic. And that's where we have to build that support from everyone here, you know, those guys are holding us up guys. They're sustaining the city and they can feel that value.
So we're all in agreement about that, you gotta feel valid, you do what you do, what you, you need a little bit of appreciation and affirmation, hey, you're doing well. So how can we create a system for there to be a great constructive communication coming both up and down? Because that line can either give you good or it can give you bad, so somebody's gotta monitor that.
By, yes, by communicating, we have been able to accomplish the gym with the school, communicating and getting united. We were able to work on the, uh, the gym. We've have also, uh, one of the organization who's done, done a lot for the city, the Rotary, uh, Club. They've come in and they've done the, the park and they're working on another park. So by uniting with all these different entities, we are able to, and communicating with them, asking. If you don't ask, you're not gonna get it. And if, all they can say is no, but they've been doing great. By communicating with them, we have been able to accomplish some real nice projects, yeah.
We've got forty-five minutes, I don't mean to cut you off, but when you talk about communication, what exactly can point, what exactly are you meaning by constructive communication?
Well, there should be a regular, uh, method to communicate.
A method or a system?
System.
You just put a, a communication system?
Focus on the goal.
Focus, so focus on the goals? Or, okay, that's what we're gonna go through the, I'm talking just about, about communication system, let's start right there. What's a good, what's, what communicative systems do you have right now, are they integrated? Because, uh, if there's no systems in place, there's actually no structure. A structure is made out of systems, we are made out of, we have different, our, we structure because there's systems. Are, are systems in the city integrated for all of us to go in the same direction at the same time? And do they integrate together to understand?
So that organism has to be integrated?
Absolutely, but that's, that's part of the digital, you know, but that, you already got that on the.
There's also two different audiences of community, there's the staff and the organization, there's also community, so.
You put, put an S in, in the back of systems, you are absolutely right. So there's two systems, but they gotta integrate, there's gotta be some kind of, something, I know when the tragedy happens, fire department, EMS, PD, everybody, they should have a, they should, right? They're, they, they'll find a way, I'm sure if something happened to the city, you have something that, communicate with the key people, uh, up, up, up the stream, up to the governor, and downstream up to the community. Okay, there has to be systems now, that starts with here, at this, at this, in this room. How is the communication? Because we're all, I'll be honest with you, we're all, should be professional, we're all adults, and we have a job to do. We have a job to do. So sometimes, uh, obviously, uh, one of the, uh, as a state, we'll send out a associate to go back in. The problem that we have in our thing is, we think that if I communicate everything to him and give him everything I got, he's gonna take my job. That's the bad, that's not a leadership mentality, no, I want him to succeed, I want him to succeed, I want them to succeed. When you have an offer, you want everything, everything, my position, my share, my, no, 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 no. That's, that's not the right, that's not leadership mentality. Leadership mentality is, look, I am going to give you everything I have and in the same time you're not, but you're becoming valuable as a leader. And the way you do that is effective communication, there is no other way. There is no other way that's gonna happen. So, when you bring that up, do we need a systems for communication in the city?
When you talk about that, would you just say, if I think you hit the nail on the head, different departments in the city, what would you do to communicate that? How would you use communication to have people feel more secure about, they're not gonna lose their job because their underlings are doing a better job or?
That, that would entail a lot of, uh, culture index, that would entail a lot of matrix, like, but we, we, that would entail another, that would probably be on the parking lot, be discommunication, uh, in that asset. Cause it really needs to break down, and that's what we're gonna do right now for this, for just for the city. So what would we need to do to get better communicative systems for positive communication? What would we, or do we have something already in, in place?
We have community meetings.
Okay, community, that's great, that's for in, in, sir.
So, we use teams a lot, right? We, we use that system of teams and the staff will develop different groups, right? So we'll have, we're working on a, on a all-inclusive playground, right? So we have a group of that and we've included everybody that's related to that. And so we share that information amongst each other real quick. Right, and we do it for a lot of things, like, you know, Greg and I have several Teams chats going because he's working on a project that kind of ties into what I do. And then we have fire department and PD and animal control, so we kind of do that.
You're at, you're at a micro level.
At the.
You're at a micro level.
At the operational level.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, that's how we, micro, uh, that's good, but we need to get the macro first, right? Let's hit the macro level first, okay? So what do we need to do to enhance this, uh, constructive communication? What needs to be done, this is where ideas come out, we got about forty minutes. But what needs to be done?
Are we talking about communications, citywide?
That's where we want to start, citywide communication, department-wide communication? Internal?
We're talking about city employees.
Yeah, internal then, mayor? Internal?
Mostly department and division head, we, we, we're all, we're all, we're all.
So all of you are together around?
Weekly.
Weekly.
So, weekly?
Oh, monthly.
This group needs weekly.
That's amazing, so communication should be there, it should prioritize, it can speak, and what needs to be done in case, unless there's an emergency and then we have a check, because something else happened, we know that already. Okay, so this communication is a right communication being presented, because sometimes people want a mic, microphone, and they have nothing to say, they just say, okay. Okay, they, they, it does, so we've done a system, it's perfect to what we're doing, and here we go. Does that make sense? I didn't know that, y'all, I didn't, that's all.
For one thing that you said at the very beginning, to listen to the ones that need to be heard.
Yes.
That during our department head meetings, that doesn't have to.
Okay, so, uh, for that one, is, is, listen to the, those that need to be heard. Okay, so now we have to find out who needs to be heard? Who needs to be heard?
I, I think what I've found is that it doesn't filter down to division heads and managers. So we may say.
But it doesn't filter down?
Whatever we discuss in, um.
Do you have a major for that, or is this assumption, or is this?
It's just from, uh, no, it's from my experience here, where we have department heads and electorals, as I'm giving example, we had a department head, uh, budget meeting back in March. And it didn't filter down to all the division heads.
Okay.
So that created problems.
There's a bottleneck somewhere. Okay, this, 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 really quick, this, this, so, something comes from this table right here, a decision is made at this table, from here.
Goes to her.
Where does it go?
For her.
Oh, okay, so here we go, let's try to do a diagram right here, alright. Okay, here's the diagram, okay, from here, that would be the, 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 then from here. Where, where does it go?
City man.
To the city manager, to the city manager. Ma'am, from you, you fluff it up, I don't know what you do with it, what do you do with it? No, no, what do you do with, you just get it and just pass it along, you look at it, you review it, you edit it, what do you do?
All of the above.
Great, okay, so she's got a filter that goes through the, from the unnecessary, that didn't need to be, that didn't need all, cause there's a lot of fluff up that happens over here, that's not probably outside the management, things like that. So this is purpose, so you, you bet, you find like, you know what I'm talking about.
Yes.
So, you, you find, right, you chop it up, I don't need this, and we don't need this, this is what's need, does somebody review it before you let it go?
No, we take it to the department head meeting and all vet it.
Okay, so from there, it goes to the department head meetings, that's, who, 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 department is? One, two, all, all, so all of you get the message from her, once, once, whose department it is? Once you get it, what are you doing? Out. Out. From one? How many you have?
I bring it to, to my system, my system, you know, we can use, I have, I have.
Okay. So it goes from here to the heads, right? Department head. Okay. Department head, you take it from, to your, what is it? Assistant, from, from, ever now, assistant, okay? So, the assistant does that, or do you do that? You give it to assistant and he does, okay, so assistant, uh, to the staff, I get, to the team, okay?
I gotta make sure that what I give, I, my research. Right, so make sure it's clear, specific, and excuse.
Okay, go. Does everybody see this, this, this one yet?
But isn't that process, Mrs. Burkhard, you get it, you meet with Mr. Chavez if it's something related to him, and then finances? And then bring it to the directors, right?
We, we vet almost everything that comes from council through the department head meeting. Uh, yes, I have individual, uh, duties and responsibilities, and so does Mr. Chavez over departments and divisions. And we have our internal communication daily. But when it comes to vetting something and making sure every aspect of it has been taken care of, we do that at the department head level.
So it goes from you to the department head, which is decent, and this is where you, you hash things out before you let it go to your assistant and into the team. Everybody see the system? Who has a different system than this?
We all have the system.
Okay, I understand, but do you have a different system, if you have? Who do you have to you?
Assistant director.
So you do have assistant?
Yeah, but in terms of, uh.
I, I'm just talking about the process, I'm just talking about, did you get it from, from the city manager, right?
Yes, well, in me would be department heads and then I would have the, it would be different division heads, so I would go from department heads to division heads. Which would be.
Okay, we've gone from, so.
City managers, department heads, and then division heads, that's another layer.
Division, does everybody have that there? This is the division, division head. Does anybody have that one?
So, no, it's department heads, then division heads.
I'm sorry, department, you go. Thank you, from here to here, to there, and then come back here. Okay, anybody else have a different? Does everybody follow this one, does everybody follow this system right here? Okay, so this is very simplistic, very, very easy to follow, okay, if you have the same system, it works out forever, but it's everyone knows, hey, where are we at, where's my shopping? And this is a, an indicator of where your bottleneck is. If they don't hear it over here, it's somebody's problem going up.
And there's also another dynamic, which they're kind of, they just always come from the council, some come from council, individual council. So that's the information that's.
Okay, so, this is where the team of the board over here needs to get it together and say, you know what? We've got to make sure that everything, they, they gotta speak the same language, especially for our city. If one decide, if the decision is made, they know this, I'm just reiterating, if the decision is made, everybody gets heard, and everybody, a, a buy-in, and everybody speaks the same language. We know that, it should be the same way at this table.
But it should be that, that the council, whoever, goes direct to her. Not around to other departments or anything, goes to her, right?
But that's what I'm saying, that sometimes that information doesn't go down to the departments.
So there's, there's, there's a bottleneck right here, that's what you're saying?
Bottom neck, the bottleneck, a lot of what I was saying, is department heads, division heads. It doesn't get down to division head.
Does everyone have division heads, or you're the only one, you have one? You do? Everyone had, so if they did, you don't, so not everybody does. Who does not have division heads? One, two. And you don't either, right?
Anna, Mari, you guys are in a different situation because you have relatively small offices.
So, so. So they don't need one?
You can pull everyone into your own office and go, this is what happened. So, the.
Yeah, I, I'm not, okay, that made my, everything of that, you're right, some of you have what, five, six people, three people?
Two.
Some of you drink coffee together a bit, okay, so, so some of you don't have it, but for the main part, this is the, this is the communicative line going down, and it's also a communicative line going up. And that line should, going up should not be any smaller than the one coming down. It's the same line. You know, well, that's what we're here to fix. If, 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 if the line is broad, the width band coming down is broad, we want, they want everything to be heard by them, they also got, and not only them, everybody needs to hear them coming up.
But.
Do we make time for that? That's what I'm asking, this is where communication, does that make sense? You've got to, this is where, where it needs to start, nothing happens without communication. Now, uh, saying that, I need to tell it to you know, that everybody does not communicate the same way. It's not a cookie cutter. Everybody's got different personalities, even if there's two in your office, I can guarantee you, there's difference. So how do you communicate? With that question, I'll ask you this, what business are we in? That's absolutely right.
Service.
We're, no, no, we're in the people business, we serve people, but we're in the people business. If we're in the people business, especially, businessmen notice, you've got to learn about your people. How much do you study your people, because those are the assets that we have in our community. And this is where communication comes in. Are you sanguine, are you melancholic, are you pragmatic, are you, but what are, who, how do I communicate with you? There's different ways of communicating and motivating them, but that's the job of the leader to do that.
Exactly.
That's the job of the leader, it's their job to know you, it's, it's their job to know them, it's their job to know them, 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 and their job, well, these, they, they know their facts. That makes sense? So, now that we have a system, what's going through the system now? What are you communicating?
As little as possible, that's what it is. And I think one of the key factors that we should be looking at is that, when they have the director's meeting, sometimes it doesn't channel all the way down. Because we want to give them the good things, but we don't want to give them the bad things, or, you know, I think it's, it's always, it, it streams down the most, and this is for every business, the most important people. And I understand every director here is very important, but are, are people that are on the bottom pole. If we're not giving them the set of empowerment for them to come to us to tell us what's going on, then what are we doing? If, if communication is stopping halfway is because these people cannot go in and discuss something with their media supervisor, uh, what they heard. So, and that communication doesn't channel up to administration, who is the one that feels this is not important? It's already employees out there. Because they have their sessions, they have their meetings on Mondays or Tuesdays or whatever it is, they come in with a deal, but how many, how much of that communication goes all the way down to the employee? So that they can understand that they're just empowered to express their opinion like everybody else. You know, and, and this is a thing that, that we're, we're short of, of that, is because a lot of our employees feel like, why am I gonna say something when nobody's gonna recognize me?
I think that's where metrics come in.
Yeah.
Is there a measurement, a standard, and if that comes in, would it?
By the way, Pastor, I'm gonna have to take off, I do have to go to work, cause one of my employees son passed away and I have to go cover their, their day, so I appreciate you, sir, thank you very much. Council, you're gonna run? Yeah, he's got it.
Good.
One of the things that we don't, in the city, we don't follow the chain of command.
Uh, that's my next question, I know there's military people here, but there is a chain of command. It, it's very aggravating for someone like you, if I'm your employee and I jump, like, I'm gonna go and tell. It it's very aggravating for someone like you, if I'm your employee, and I jump, like, I'm going to go and tell the mayor, tell her, and they get you, you feel like, well, wait a minute, there's a lack of one word, there's a lack of trust. Well, it could, it could happen. Now, now, this is, there there's a leniency when we, because these people can talk down here, and and there's no problem with that, okay? The problem is when they they get their ear, they think they can whap, which is okay, they can do that on personal note, but in the job and doing here, serving, there's a chain of command. If you're my boss, hey, I've got a problem, if you can't fix it, it's okay, do I have my permission to go to your boss? Hey, but let's pop open the story, yeah, if you got this situation, if you can't, then we go to the next person also, this is the way it should work, I know it takes time, but if the system must work, that'll work efficiently and correctly, let's just, until you get to somebody that says, hey, the buck stops here, I'm going to make a decision, now that you brought it all up, it may concur with the person that brought it up, or it may not, but somebody has to be the decision maker.
And then the problem is whenever the flow down, this level over here, and bypasses you to the department head or division.
So.
So the the employee is getting something that their opus doesn't know, that they're going to have to ask.
Okay, so that that's where standard operating procedures come in, hey, if you're doing something out of line, you're, you need to be written on. I mean, I hope you have those, I I'm assuming you do, you know, you don't have standard operating procedures?
We have our personnel policy.
Personal, personal policy, sorry.
Yeah.
No, okay. Okay, yeah, I mean, those are, there's there's tools that you can use to make sure that your team flourishes and your team succeeds. There's there's tools that you can use at every level, even up here, there's tools that can be used. Okay? So communication, uh, uh, who brought that one? He brought that about, does this make sense? Does it make sense to everyone on on this aspect? Is this what you were talking about, or are we off on this? So how can, now that we know what it is, we got a couple of this, how can we fix this? Anybody?
I think we should CC hard copy people more.
Would that fix it?
That would fix some of the problem.
What would be something that would fix most of the problem?
That, now you're saying, well, I mean.
Yeah, that that's a possibility.
Emails, uh, I I think emails is probably the number one communication tool that we use.
I don't know, do you have a matrix on that, on communication, either Twitter, or do we have a matrix for that?
I don't know about social media.
No?
I'm I'm on the side of the superest of the old people.
Okay.
Well, so here's, here's the problem, and this is what I deal with, that my job is you start, because of all the differences in social media in that, you actually start getting official policy and directives sent out via some other communication system versus the official email or anything like that. And so then, if not everyone is on that system, not everyone gets the direction.
So what do we need to address that? Good, very good point, you know. Do we need to address that?
Is, I don't know if that's an issue for the city employees. It's an issue as an employee at my job.
It is.
So how can we fix that? What are some ideas to fix that in the next couple of minutes? I'm sure we can do that.
Make it standard?
Make it.
Make it what?
Make it standard.
Standard, okay? Now, whose job is that going to be? Who's going to make this happen? Who's going to, who's going to do the diagram? Who, we need to pick a team. Who's this?
City manager.
City manager?
That's what I would think.
I.
She gone, I know she gone, priority, I know who you are. So, w- once that gets standard, it comes from the board, city manager, department heads, uh, division heads, and then comes back to the assistant, and then comes, and everybody wants, oh, hey, this is the new standard, I want to make sure that everybody understands it way at the bottom, okay? This is, for this is this, for this is this, you want information, come with me, I answer all questions. That's perfect. Does that make sense? Is is that feasible? I'm sure it is. Bob?
People need to read their emails.
Sorry.
I don't, I'm sorry. Any other, any other thing on communication? So you're going to be taking care of this, and then from there, she's just going to interject that information through the bandwidth, coming down to everybody.
And people need to know how to get somebody on, like, if you have a group tech, a group email, how to get those people on the group email, because that's one thing I don't know, because.
How to do that?
Yeah, how you get.
That's one that's, how many IT people do I have? Give it to some of them, they'll get, they'll get you on real.
You can create your own, if you have a group that you want, you can create your own, but like, you can just click one.
Mm-hmm.
Grab one.
Yep.
That's right.
So any questions on this, on communication systems, on this one? Okay, um, everybody's, everybody said we got the system down, we got a person who's going to take care of it, and I was going to look, any questions? I want to make sure that everybody is on board on this one. So when you have the next meeting, they'll say, hey, you said you were on board, right? Right? So we get that one down, okay? So the next one is going to be, the next one's going to be, which one? Would be roles and responsibilities, pillars of support, metrics, I think metrics. What's the, the next one you want to tackle?
Pillars of support.
Pillars of support, everybody agree?
Well, I I was thinking roles and responsibilities, because that has been brought up multiple times as we had the communication discussion.
Bob? Roles and responsibilities, here we go, what can we talk, ideas for that?
Well, what what was referenced, eh, multiple times, has been specifically members of council, whether it's going to one of the, you know, employee, you know, team members, or a department, division head direct, and saying, you need to do this. Which all of our directions are supposed to go through the city manager. And then, now that city employees put in a, you know, catch twenty-two. Do I listen to the council member or not? And sometimes what has happened, I know this for a fact, is that the the employee, because of the pressure, has done what the council member wanted, and Shawna never found out about it. And and so that that goes back to the communication part of, hey, I'm doing this because this council member told me to, right? And and then get her involved, because hopefully she can go, okay, that that complies with something that council has already provided direction on, or no. Because that that's outside, or it's it's directly contradictory to a policy or ordinance that the council has put in place, so why are we doing that, right? But if we circumvent her, everything goes to the bottom.
Absolutely. There's got to be an order to it, and honestly, it starts at this table. There's got to be an order to it. You can't skip the line. If you if you skip the line and they they do it, uh, no, it it starts at, it it's just leadership, it starts at the head. Does it start here? You can't go down, you can't expect anybody else all the way to the bottom to do it. So it's got to stop, it's got to start here. You know, if somebody tells you something, hey, has it been gone through the city manager, has it gone through the proper procedures? It's a simple question. Okay, because that'll take time, because employees at the bottom will take all your time, you can give them all your time. Okay, so ensure the process, okay? But roles and responsibilities would be great. So how can we, how can we make this better? Do we have ideas on how to make it better? Do we need to rewrite them? Do we need to file them? Do we need to get the team to get there and say, we need to clarify, we need to make sure that they're understandable? Do we need to change them? Do we need to get some out of the way? What are the proposals for this? Ideas for roles and responsibilities?
I don't have ideas, but I want to mention another problem, is if your department that provides a service, like IT, your maintenance, or things like that, people will bypass the supervisor. And they get their work done, or instead of going to the system. You know, instead of doing what you're supposed to do, work order, whatever, they'll hold up here.
Do you think that's correct? So it goes by that, we have to go over by that? If that's happening, that is a change, I mean, first of all, flow forward. We all have to follow the same system, always. Just everyone got to follow the same system, and then they integrate. You do your part, the system, but it integrates with your part, and your part, and your part, and Jan's part, and your part, and we all integrate. Using the same system, doing different jobs, but doing the same thing, like, well, this table, so you do your job, but you're within this, the infrastructure. So, back to this role and responsibilities, any ideas on how we can make it better? Your thinking.
You know, uh, Ms. Burkhardt, uh, not to circumvent you at all, uh, uh, some, sometimes I feel that there's just too much on your plate. You know what I'm saying? And I want you to concentrate in what we really need to be done, you know, so I I might call somebody, uh, uh, from the city to say, hey, uh, would you look into this water leak over here? You know, uh, I don't want to call you on that, you know, but you have your support staff that is with you, that, you know, that I I call them. I'm not telling them what to do, you know, as far as, I want you to go fix this, or I want you to go look into it. Uh, there's a, there's a lamp that's not working over here, you know, uh, there's a, a a dog that just got run over, you know, uh, and it's sitting on the side of the, uh, street, and the kids are going to get out of school, and could you look into that? I'm not trying to keep that away from you, all I'm trying to do is get some little everyday, uh, uh, situations, uh, taken care of without bothering you with it, you know what I mean? Now, do you feel that I need to come to you for each of those? Might, what I see is is a minor, uh, uh, everyday, uh, situations that that come out within the city.
I try to, I I try to be, um, open to however the council, uh, tries to communicate best. Um, so it, as long as I'm aware of it, uh, through an email, through, hey, heads up, um, I've asked about this, you know, I just want to be in the loop.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Yes, it does, it does, you know.
It's not that I have to take care of it necessarily, um, or I can farm it out, but at least I know about it and I can follow up on it.
Okay, okay.
So JP, I I would say, for your specific example, that's not what I was referring to, because if if you were JP, not on city council, you could make that same phone call. Right? And 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 so I've, for for stuff like that, honestly, I call up, you know, hey, we have brushes that need to be picked up, I call up neighborhood services. I don't even let her know, because any citizen of Del Rio could do that. That's, that is not what I was referring to. I was referring to, hey, you need to pave this street, you know, well, that's not on the paving plan, well, do it anyway, you know. S- s- something bigger like that is what I was.
I I felt that was being part of that, and I wanted to try to, you know, clarify myself, that I I'm not trying to not go through her, you know, I'm just trying to get some stuff away from you, you know. Uh, uh, through all the things that we're going through, this this, uh, sustainable, uh, infrastructure, uh, uh, item has been my most priority right now, and we're going some other places, you know, but, uh, we've got our sewer and our water problems.
I think that that's our third goal. Uh, I know we only have seventeen minutes, but I think that's our, our, obviously, uh, it works around here somewhere, but it's our, our third goal.
And 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 we're working on it, we're 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 working on it. I I do know that we're working on it.
Diligently.
But but, you know, this, uh, financial, uh, uh, reconciliation thing, uh, we need to take care of that, so that we can go, be able to go get our our loans, you know, our grants, or, or, you know, where we're going to borrow the money to be able to do the things that we need to do, you know, uh, and and, uh, without that, there can be no growth.
Sure.
And we're already kind of holding that growth back a little bit, because we're, we we haven't been able to, uh, complete our task, you know. It's it's coming, it's going, you know, but we haven't been able to complete it yet.
I think that, I, if I may, um, I think the projects under, uh, not to skirt this item, but the projects listed on that page, uh, you know, that I suggested, um, are all things that we keep right in front of our our faces as a, as a team. Uh, because that has been what's been articulated, is let's get those COs finished, let's get the projects finished that we've got funding for and we're sitting on, you know, uh, so let's not sit on anything, let's move. And so that is the, the goal, is to get action in every area, uh, such as that list that I provided on the infrastructure.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
And that's the urgency. I I I'm trying to bring to the table for city staff the urgency to not let anything slide, because we've let it slide too long. And so, uh, there's, there's a sense of urgency that I'm trying to instill, not that everything is urgent. It may be important, but maybe not urgent, but a sense of urgency, especially when it comes to fulfilling these COs. I'll give an example. I may have made a wrong mistake, uh, saying maybe we should spend some CO money, that's two thousand sixteen money, on, uh, a bridge across, uh, San Felipe Creek. It has nothing to do with the project. It has to do with the fact that we need to have a sense of urgency, because we're going to not just make that CO, or I'm not that, just that project taxable, but we're about to make that entire certificate of obligation taxable if we don't get that money spent in a ten year time period. So, um, I I just use that as an example. Those are the things that I'm trying to create urgency about.
Can I, can I add to that? One of the things in terms of communication is when plans change. Sometimes when plans change, and the department are involved in the change, and the kind of effect.
I'll try that, because I think, uh, it all ties it back to roles and responsibilities. Because you have the role of council, you have the role of city manager, and you have the role of department heads and division heads. However, the role of responsibilities, we all should know that role of responsibility. However, you have to believe that means, right? And going back to the infrastructure, the specific means, we need to have that role of communication, so we're all steering in the same direction to make our role of responsibility become executable, with the means of.
And the big one is just regarding about is where your budget, you talked about, your budget happens, was, are you willing to, have that affect your goals?
I mean, yeah, there's, there's, there's goals, either we execute it, right? Um, it's not a wish list, it's, it's a must, right? But in the day, and we all know, it's not to use, it's, it's, it's a funding issue, right? And I hear, and what the voices are, and desires are, and wishes are, I think, what is really, what can really be funded? And not cut certain things that should be actually funded, that should have been many years ago, but yet, for some odd reason, that plan sometimes changes, right? And I have a role, and I think it pays well enough, that my role is to give the community the best that we can, right? However, there's so much involved, it's overwhelming sometimes, right, that there's so much, I know my specific role, but that's probably the actual support. Because I need that support, public works is a big function, right? But I need that support. So when you want to cut the budget, or you want to cut this, or you want to cut that, this is my idea, now, I'm not being friendly with people. Now, this council question wants, it's a weakness, it's better than this, that you believe should be our role. And I think that's what happens.
But that, those things, you can, you can bring it up to the, to the table, so we can, so we can hash them out, okay? I know what, uh, we got about, we got ten minutes, okay, we're about to close this up. We did, honestly, we spoke a lot, a lot of people granted, we did a great meeting. But this meeting was to make sure that we get things done. I see the only thing we got down right now is to make sure that we understand the communication system, come down on, we really haven't finished yet a complete team for the, uh, financial reconciliation teams, timeframe, who's going to do it, and who's going to be feedback, uh, or feedback, and making sure the vendors are all there. It's a show out of, uh, a lot of work to do, okay? Um, so with that said, considering we're making a last remark, I'm going to give you maybe fifteen seconds, twenty seconds to do a last remark, and I'll close this up. Anybody? Table?
I would, I would like to make one assumption, that coming out of this meeting, that number five, um, is still very important.
It is.
And it's sustainable infrastructure.
Absolutely.
I, that was my assumption.
I I I know.
I agree.
And 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 because you're on it, and it takes a lot of your time to do what you're doing, why go around you sometimes, and and get little things taken care of? Because people call me and and tell me, you know, uh, look at this, look at that. You've got a lot on your plate, I, you know, and 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 I need you to concentrate on it, you know what I'm saying?
Sure.
And and I, and I, I know, you're doing that, you're doing that, I see it, I see you're doing that. I just want you to concentrate it on it, you know.
Focus.
Focus, there you go. Thank you, that's the right word.
I need to, um, this is great, I think you should, and I think you should do the direction from council, and I'm starting from council. And I, I think there is, you should be a mutual communication, there used to be, I don't know what happened, but they could call a certain division, and that would be to relay that message to the department heads.
Any other comments?
Uh, I think for, for me, it's been a great, you know, workshop or activity, but I think I I probably had a little bit different expectations of what we were going to be doing today. As as far as I was listed on the top of the the sheet, right? as, as far as like was listed on the top of the, the sheet, right? A workshop that would guide the work of the mayor, council, and staff for the next twelve to eighteen months. So I think we have some things missing on there, at least from my point of view.
I, I would, I would make me honest, that these workshops are very necessary. I think we need to be done at least every other year. Uh, it, it needs to be, uh, what the Dan had, two days, four hours, is that enough to accomplish what is listed on this page? And because we have been council every four years.
Two years.
Every two years. I, I think that's why it is important that we have it at least every other year, so that we can have a, a continuation and an understanding of the direction of the city.
I don't believe that, eh, at least from my expectations, that this is not the stopping point. This is just the starting point. We can certainly, uh, work to have another, uh, workshop, workshop. Uh, maybe not immediately, but, uh, certainly in the very near future.
Mr. Newhouse and Mari did something, uh, usually these workshops that I'm honestly, if they're doing, I'll give you five days. Five days. You concentrate on certain things, go to the next one, and the next one, and the next one, okay? Uh, I want to thank the city manager for giving me a call on this, and, uh, I'm a citizen of Del Rio, I've been here for thirty, thirty-five years now. I've served our city with EMS, as a school teacher, um, at the police station, uh, various organizations here. Uh, and, uh, this is my city, I care for it here, this is my house. Matter of fact, this is our house.
Our house.
And we take care of our house. So, we take care of our house, we take care of each other. That's what we do here. And I appreciate you so much for, for, in the role that you play, all of each and every one of you. And sometimes you make decisions that are very difficult, very difficult. But those are leadership decisions that are best for the community. And your leadership, one of the, one of the things with leadership is to sacrifice. You've got to say a no to you, to say a yes to those that you love. So I want to thank you to everyone, me personally, for me, for Martin's sake, and my family. Thank you. Thank you so much for all, and to everyone that I didn't get to see. Some of you, like you said, in the middle of the night, something buzzed the wire, electricity, fire department, it's called EMS. Something broke here, something broke, thank you for picking me up, so honestly. But thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to be able to do it, so that they're ready. If there's anything else I can serve you with, this is what I'm here for. Thank you so much, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Alrighty, um, Pastor Segah, thank you very much, appreciate it. Um, I would like to thank everyone else, if you were like me, you didn't necessarily want to be here, you wanted to be doing something else, but you understand, uh, you needed to be here, it was important. Uh, piggyback on what Randy said, uh, I am pretty sure we're going to have to have another one of these, uh, just to finish fleshing out, you know? And also to go more detail, like you said, you know, kind of, hey, what, what exactly are our priorities for the next twelve to eighteen months? Um, to piggyback on what Mari said, at one point, we had talked about doing something like this every fall after new people got on council. Um, we've also talked about doing for the new council members, you know, in like July, like a half-day kind of orientation, meeting with department head, stuff like that. Um, so we probably need to, uh, try to reinvigorate that, so. On that note, it's eleven fifty-five, and we are done, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dooz.